Six oh three, October thirtieth, workshop. Call the order, roll call please.
Early, here.
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 Here. And a moment before we start, not having had Mr. Seaman for two weeks, we hope the best for him. I'm assuming that he's on the road to recovery, but.
His fever's gone, but he has no energy, so he'd have full blown pneumonia.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
Is he staying home and staying down, I hope?
He just said he has no energy.
I guess it's, it's dangerous, it can.
Okay, I think I'll let whoever wants to guide us, if that's Ms. McNeese or Ms. Vincent, on the sequence.
So we have three elements in the queue, plan administration, lifelong learning, which is really public schools kind of retooled, and then transportation, so I don't know that there's an order of preference for us, if there's something that you want to.
We can look at this and see.
Tackle first.
Before we tackle, it, it does appear to me that perhaps, I'll just use an example, lifelong learning, objective and elements, that some of this might be outside our lane.
That's what we do in education plan.
And then therefore, maybe we get some guidance on how much we, how deep we want to get into it and how relevant our comment is on this, so that we can be effective on what our lane is and then not get outside that. You can take that lead.
That's fine.
No child left behind.
Do you want, yeah, do, yeah, what, I mean, which element do you, I think transportation is probably the heaviest lift right now. So if we want to expend our energy early on transportation and then see how we feel.
The densest document happened to be the heavy. Okay, you got, I'm all in for that.
Well, maybe it's only, it's heavy for me, it's just not, it's not my strongest area, which is why we have Caroline.
And then I'll speak for staff, we've been successful with everyone focusing on the clean version, and perhaps we should use that.
So I believe last time you just started at the top and.
We do have to slide up the.
Goal one.
summarizes what's been done.
On 1.1, just the first thing that I'm seeing is, I'm going to focus on the word minimize. Has there already been some type of an evaluation study to determine options, or should we say evaluate and minimize? Or evaluate to minimize? I don't know, is, has there been any evaluation done by outside consultants for us? On that topic?
I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not understanding the question.
Are you talking about the first bullet?
Yeah, the first bullet.
Are you talking about like a traffic study?
Well, you don't know, I mean, to me, when I see this.
Traffic related deaths?
So, so we coordinate very closely with the regional, with the MPO. And Ford Pinellas, they really are the transportation planning umbrella for the area. So a lot of what we do, correct me and jump in if any time, Caroline, is really responding and working with their data and information. They're kind of the clearinghouse for, you know, for the data around, you know, transportation planning. So we don't have a separate transportation plan, the, we do have.
We rely on other agency sources.
We do, with the exception of, I mean, we do have a multimodal transportation district that was put in place back in the, you know, the mid two thousands, and we had an initial quality of service analysis, and all that was done to support the smart code and CRA plan that was put in place and for the sponge docks. So that's a focus for us, is to move that further, move the needle on that, update it, and, and try to continue to, you know, to implement, you know, improvements in that. And that, that really is not just looking at, it's, it's really shifting the emphasis to bike, pedestrian, and transit. Even that, it might be microtransit, it could be a circulator, so that's the, the, the focus of the MMTD for us. So I don't know if I answered your question.
No, you, you did, and I didn't hear DOT in that, because we have US nineteen that falls within our city limits.
Yeah, they're definitely, yeah, they're definitely a coordinating agency as well.
What is transportation equity?
So, transportation equity is, it really gets, it's, it's pretty much what it sounds like. So in our current transportation system, pedestrians, transit riders, cyclists are not given the same amount of resources or the same amount of safety that people driving cars are, so.
So making sure they're all considered equal in terms of their usage and availability, or?
Well, it's kind of like that picture, I don't know if you see in the picture, and sometimes things being equal isn't really equity.
Relatively.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, like the kids on the step.
Equal could be relatively equal, this one's equal, but this one here has actually got, they're equal, but they're relative to one another.
Right, I mean, for instance, like, if we spent as much money on car infrastructure as on transit, we'd have a pretty good transit system. So, but, you know, if we spent the same amount of money we spent on car infrastructure on just sidewalks, well, gosh, we'd have a whole lot of sidewalks, but that, that equality wouldn't really meet that equity.
And do we have safe street principles built into the plan currently, or proposed?
We do, in, in the existing comp plan we do, and then the board did sign on to the safe street Pinellas plan, which Ford Pinellas put out.
Thank you.
Policy one dot one dot nine, coordinate with FDOT, Pinellas County, and Ford Pinellas to mitigate anticipated impacts of redevelopment within the MMTD on the strategic intermodal system. What does that consist of? Meaning?
So what, what this gets at, and I'm reading that, that does sound like a lot of finer talk. We, we all know that US nineteen, you know, is not great and needs something done to it, and that there's been plans for years and years to upgrade in, in Tarpon Springs, as it is part of the strategic intermodal system. And part of the, so our multimodal transportation district, part of nineteen falls in that. So it would be coordinating, you know, land use planning and, and transportation planning, and all, all the kind of planning that we need to go into it as we're moving on that.
The, and I think the original kind of impetus for this, I don't think this is, this is not a new policy, I don't believe.
No, it's not.
So the, again, when we put the multimodal transportation district in place, at that point in time, we still had hard concurrency for transportation planning. So the MMTD was created and approved by the state in coordination with the various agencies. We recognized that in order for the community redevelopment area to be successful, that we had to address, and we had to kind of bump up density and intensity to promote redevelopment within the CRA. And the only way that we could do that was through this, adopting a multimodal transportation district that looked at those impacts and how to mitigate for those things. Because ultimately, everything that we do is within a quarter mile of a state, of a state highway. So you, we automatically were getting basically, no, you can't do that, you can't do that. So the multimodal transportation district was one way to do that, to look at these alternative levels of service for bike, for ped, for transit, as well as also recognizing that we had, you know, street segments within the MMTD that could be completed. Anything that you could do that would take, could take any trips off of US nineteen and keep them local versus having to get on nineteen. So that was kind of the impetus for, so that's what that really was kind of talking about.
Makes sense.
So goal one has several long pages of objectives, so I, this, just to clarify, so I'll just say, hey, let's focus on objective one point one up to one point two, and see if anybody has any more comments or questions in regards, and that's pretty much just page one.
I have no more questions.
Then we can go to page two and objective one point two under goal one.
Before we move on, for that last part, for one point one, point ten. You know, I'm just, this is the, between the old Winn-Dixie and, okay. Is there any plans within this to, I don't know, make that safer, because it's super dangerous, as it is right now?
Oh, wait a minute, are you talking about?
I'm not sure if you're talking about, this part extends to.
This is talking about, yeah, making the connection between Belcher and, where Belcher Road kind of dead ends into Klosterman, then it turns into Distin.
Okay, that's further down then, okay.
So you're talking, but what are you talking about?
I'm talking about, so I'm not, because I'm not sure which roads they are, as far as which state and, you know, where they all combine there. But in between the old Winn-Dixie complex and the new Winn-Dixie complex, and like where Roadies is and the.
Right, right.
Where there's like four lanes.
Yes.
And then there's like two entrances, and there's a bunch of accidents that are happening within, within that. I don't know if that has anything, like where that ties into this.
Like people want to turn into Winn-Dixie, but their first inkling is to turn into Dunking Donuts, which is the wrong choice.
Median to like stop you from turning anywhere you want.
That segment of, I think you're talking about the segment of, of Meers, from Alt-Nineteen to Safford.
Yeah, yeah, Mango's down later, but yeah.
We can, we can at least, I mean, that's our local road, I believe, so.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that had, yeah.
We can, we can at least, you know, bring it up.
I think just like some like median, so that some people can not turn, because you can just shoot across all four lines.
You can, yeah, yeah, you definitely have to kind of have your head on a swivel going through there.
But now that the lady brought attention to policy one point one, point one zero, and the wording is accurate, but one has to have a picture of what's going on there. It sounds like what that paragraph says is that there is an intent or a goal to make a connection from what is now a stop as you're heading north on, easier to just call it Belcher, to cut through what is now those piles of, right, and, and make a connection there. So the, the goal is to make a connection there, there's been lots of plans for that, is that how I read that? And at a minimum, it would be a twelve foot bike path?
Where, so we, we had, I don't know if y'all were tuned into this or not, we did, over, over a year ago, we conducted, we had a consultant, it was Kemley Horn, that worked with both sides of the, of the, of the gap. And they, we evaluated just some initial complete streets options for the, for the distant corridor at large. One piece of that obviously is the gap piece, and, you know, that, the policy decision of whether or not to make the connection, you know, and make Distin go all the way through, is, is an open one at this point. We had a lot of good community input into, you know, what could happen there. Ultimately, you know, there needs to be a lot of environmental analysis, because there's wetlands there, we're not, you know, so we're, we're still at the beginning stages, but there's been a policy in the comp plan for a long time to, at one point it was, you know, make the connection, it's been softened over time to evaluate it for the right type of connection, and I think that's the context sensitiveness of it, you know, it certainly would help with emergency services if that is possible, because right now you've got, you know, our routing for, you know, so, so there's a lot of positives, but you also then have just the impact on residents, you know, that, you know, there are plenty of people that don't want it. So, so it's an eval, it's in an evaluation state essentially, so.
Okay, so.
So they've done that study?
They've done an initial complete streets, it's a concept plan, it's, and that is on, that's on Connect Tarpon, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
There's a project page on Connect Tarpon.
The reason why I'm asking if it has, I'm wondering, thinking about, because you made it, the emergency services sector, which is police, fire, ambulance, did they consider an option of actually building that connection and then let, have it shut off?
That, that's some of the, that's some of the options that have been explored, but at this point, it's all very conceptual, and I don't think there's a, we don't have absolute policy direction to go forward with it at this point.
Does Distin Avenue run on the Distin Ridge? You don't know?
I didn't know there's a ridge.
So there's a, there's a old, yeah, geological feature that runs from Gulfport all the way up to Tarpon, called the Distin Ridge.
How do you know that? That's amazing.
I don't, I don't know that it's related, but I think, but it, I mean, I, you know, our local Distin is more of a.
It's just the, the road, okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure, yeah.
It might, but it could be.
It runs the length of Pinellas. That's, that's why, yeah.
Lots of stuff named after Distin.
But I didn't know about a Distin Ridge.
I didn't know the ridge.
There is, there is, it's, yeah.
If I may, a couple more questions, I'll try and keep them short, Mr. Zimbellis was nodding his head, that you were fully aware of that study? This PNC member went right by me, was it purely Board of Commissioners?
So we, the city received a multimodal, not a multimodal, a.
Complete streets.
Thank you, a complete streets grant from Ford Pinellas to evaluate the distant corridor from a complete streets concept, not, so looking also at what can be done to enhance the existing Distin, you know, north-south for safety, sidewalks, things of that nature, as well as an initial evaluation of the gap. And so, yes, that's, that study was done, like I said, maybe even almost two years ago.
It was, that was my first day.
Right.
Planning and zoning of two years ago?
I don't know that they.
No, I've been on it a long, long time.
I mean, the study did, you know, it didn't, you know, the concept plans, you know, didn't specifically come to the planning and zoning board. And nothing honestly was adopted, it was kind of like a receive and file almost of, of the findings.
So that being said, do you think wording might, you might want to change the wording a little bit? Because since there has been a study, can we actually say something about reevaluating the study?
We could be even further than that, but before we were there, if you didn't mind, since there was a conversation about our partner just south of Distin, Curlew there, which is the St. Pete College, did they participate in that, their study? Since that would be one of the greatest values of attaching our communities directly to the college that I had no idea were part of our community. So then, just for emphasis, because I'm humorous, how bizarre that we don't have a direct street to the college that is within our community.
We, we recognize all of that, I don't know if St. Pete College was, was a stakeholder outright when we, when the study was done.
Then that study is flawed.
So.
Well, the good news is, is that. Yeah, and, and the good news is, is that we have a grant coming down the pipeline at some point for a feasibility study.
What a great conversation, so if Mr. Zimbellis maybe thought he could put stronger wording together, I would take from continue to evaluate a context sensitive to, let's just make this happen.
Yeah, prioritize a decision. I think it's a no-brainer, I think it was so evident.
Definitely what the community wants.
Well, there's something to not.
That's, yeah.
There's something to not.
Not in my front lawn, type of thing, but when my neighbor was killed in that accident going into Anderson Park, the resulting traffic for everyone, north, south, east and west, there was a, you know, cascade effect to that. And because it was closed for an extended amount of time for the investigation, but it's just, to me, it's a no-brainer, just for emergency services, much less.
Now, we're not the BOC or others, and of course, there's always those that would say not in my backyard, or there's those that are against it, but there's only about sixteen houses along that road. But there's only about sixteen houses along that road. There's a hundred foot Duke easement to the west. And sometimes adults have to be adults and say, this is the best thing for our community. And yes, it's gonna sting a little bit, but it's the right thing.
So couldn't we say evaluate and pri- prioritize a context sensitive?
Well, it sounds like it's been evaluated.
More than once.
Or update the evaluation and prioritize.
I think what, what's really lacking at this point is like actual engineering data, like we don't, because of the landfill being there, we don't even know, like, if it's cost feasible.
That includes further study to be performed, somehow worded that that is a, an objective. Right now, it's just to say continue to evaluate.
It'll linger.
It'll linger.
We're leaving it linger language, even with more evaluate, we're just really saying, well, let's just keep talking about this great idea.
Well, especially if folks perform a.
Perform.
Remember that day when everyone took four hours to get home?
Yeah, conduct a feasibility study and prioritize a context sensitive, alright.
And establish priority.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, nice guy, great guy. Love this dog, dog in and out, four different parks every day.
That was a good topic. I'm, I'm not done. Oh, golly, I know, so painful, but this is such a, a great topic. Thank you so much. That I would think that somehow making a link to St. Petersburg College is what's being missed in this entire item. Of course, safety is important, access is important. But the fact that we have our college that's part of the community that cannot be directly accessed by the community that arguably needs it most is a flaw. And I don't know how that we can encourage them as a stakeholder to help maybe drive that process.
One, one of the things now, I don't, we haven't really sprinkled it throughout, but, you know, you have goals, objectives and policies. But then underneath the policies, you can have strategies. And so this might be a place where we want to, we want to put some bullet items as strategies, da, 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 through the following strategies.
I like that strategy.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I like that strategy.
I do too, that is a good strategy.
And, you know, making the connection to St. Pete College certainly would be one of those.
And I like the idea that you said sprinkle it, so it may not just be here though.
We'll put it in a lifelong learning element as well, so.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I think.
It may already be.
Might already be there.
It may already be there, yeah.
We're changing education right now.
Thank you for indulging me so long on that one.
That, that could be a significant one too, Dran.
Objective one point two. That's page two and then a several pages of diagrams. Two pages, three pages.
Can you, while they're digesting, can you take a swing at explaining how we can influence the design of Alt nineteen going forward and this was something that the consultants talked about, if we have certain policies.
Oh, right. So, yeah, if we have very specific things, uh, in our comprehensive plan, like these diagrams, which is one of the reasons why Renee.
Why they're in here.
Kept them in here. If we have, so when F dot does do, um, the upgrade of US nineteen or Alt nineteen for that fact matter, they're, they're gonna be using federal funds. So they have to look at the, the existing plans of the community. So it gives us a little bit more leverage to influence design.
Agree.
And all of these examples are out of the, um, they're all smart code examples.
And they all have trees.
Love them or hate them.
Real trees, not palm trees, right?
So I've got a couple, uh, just one, I'll start with this, that policy one dot two dot two. You know, when I read it, it's require bicycle lanes to be constructed where technically feasible as part of the new road construction or resurfacing. So that's a pretty broad term. That means just about any construction on any roads in the city, whether it's city, state or county or resurfacing. But what I see missing on this, and again, it just could be that I don't know enough about, this is being done. The objective is require, which is you're gonna mandate a bicycle lane to be constructed where technically feasible. I'm seeing the word, I don't see the word safety in this.
Is that part of technical feasibility?
I was gonna say, it should, it should be because, um, there are, when you look at your MUTCD, it has standard widths, um, because I know it's something that we've struggled with, um, on Gulf Boulevard, you know, out, out on the beaches, because there's nowhere to widen the road. You know, so there's no curbs, there's no sidewalks, there's just road and pedestrian and bicycle lanes that are all even straight across. Right? And they have to be specific width, so you have to give them, you know, you have like maybe a couple inches leeway. But I think that's where you get into the te- technical feasibility of it, is you have to have the available amount of roadway to accommodate bike lanes and however many traffic lanes you need. And sometimes that can be based, I think, on, um, traffic engineering studies that tell you how much volume you have for vehicles.
So if you don't have the space for the vi- the bike lane, then you don't have to put it right?
Right.
Yeah, but, but there's a, there's an argument to be made that being from the DOT and serving the DOT, that you can do those feasibility studies and you can follow the design standards, both state, federal, and you can do the MUTCD guidelines, but even if it says you can.
Should you?
The traffic volume and the accident levels on that particular corridor makes it a high risk.
Yeah, and I think that should be taken into consideration.
Yeah.
Well, I.
That's why.
It should.
But, but that word technically doesn't, if you looked at it in DOT terms, it doesn't talk about safety. It's, well, technically, is it, can it be engineered to meet the standards? Can it be engineered per the design standards applicable?
I think actually F dot in the new green book does have, um, standards that take into all of those things into account. Like, so there's a matrix of volume, um, of the roadway, the speed of the roadway, the actual design speed.
Accident history, pedestrian, a pedestrian or bicycle accidents.
Nick, if we added something on here that, that says, you know, with the, uh, with the highest priority on safety, something like that.
As long as you say that, then any engineer or any politician that wants this to happen in their area is gonna realize that, okay, it may be able to do it engineering wise, but safety has to be in emphasis.
Didn't some bicycle lanes come, come up on US nineteen and it was like?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they have them.
And the design standard will allow, given the lanes and the.
They do?
Yeah. I don't know if they're still there or not.
No, there's some that are still there.
Some that are still there.
I'm, I'm glad Ms. Cardus brought up Gulf Boulevard though, because what a smashing success. In my opinion, I used to ride and walk down there in two thousand and two thousand and one, and you can go down there now. And is it tight? Yes. Is everyone living together and is it safe and can you do it and not ride in that? Yes.
I haven't been down there in a long time.
Nobody might agree with me, but I used to spend a lot of time on my bike down there and it is, it was hard.
For the moment, I thought you were being, you were being comical with saying a smashing success.
I did too.
I was like, yeah. Down there or.
I thought the same thing.
Oh, shucks.
He must've been buzzed at the time that he was walking the bike down there.
I'm only now actually starting to embrace your sense of humor, so.
Well, then it'd be perfect time to think, say that this is a great document.
I have another one, if no one else has one. Uh, policy one dot two dot seven, maintain the wayfinding signage system for the Sponge Docks area and the downtown district. I'm not, this is just my personal opinion, I, I'm not personally convinced that what we have is, is, in my opinion, sufficient or up to date. So, so maybe the word maintain should be evaluate.
And improve.
And improve, because, I mean, technology is changing things quickly about how we can get from point A to point B with information. Now, the signs are there, but sometimes let's, let's have an open, open mind that there may be something that's even more. Actually, now that they've got kiosk centers in cities, that you can basically, they'll give you a virtual tour, you can stop and you can, just, the word maintains is keep it as it is.
You could do, yeah, evaluate or like maintain and improve.
Yeah, there you go.
Are you looking for like more branding on the signs or just more clarity?
More clarity and more simplicity on how to get from point A to point B. I know you see the signs and tell you that, you know, maybe, that means I've gotta follow those signs and see where the next one's going to be.
Yeah, and then the Sponge Docks and downtown, and sometimes it'll have too many, um, things on there, like, you know, Sunset Beach and downtown. Like, then it's too confusing when you're not looking for that, at that point.
Especially while you're moving. Clarity, clarity as well as being able to understand that, to expect it tells you there's an arrow, you know.
Looking to improve functionality.
Yeah, yeah. Or evaluate on the base, yeah, use the word evaluate, because that's a. Leads the person doing it to.
Something like, yeah, evaluate the wayfinding and signage system for the Sponge Docks area in the downtown district in order to improve functionality and clarity, something like that.
We're not planning any roundabouts, are we?
If I get my way, we are.
What'd you say, Caroline?
I said, if I get my way, we are.
I'll tell you what.
Are you like them?
I love them. Nobody dies in them. That's what I love about them.
And they keep traffic moving.
Yep.
They also work after a hurricane.
Recently happened. Have you been to the one in Palm Harbor? Well, that's new. It's gonna take a little bit, like Clearwater Beach had one and they were.
Well, the one in Palm Harbor is only one lane, so that is tolerable, you know, and that's okay. But when you get a roundabout that has two lanes, I mean.
Those, those get harder.
It gets harder. Are you saying that we're not smarter than Europeans though? I mean. Cause they use them all the time. We'll figure it out.
I live in the land of roundabouts.
Do you?
Yes.
Clearwater?
No.
No, they're so. They're everywhere.
Yeah, they are. They're everywhere. They're all over the place.
Yeah.
Do you like them?
They do keep traffic moving, so you're not stopping at lights and they are traffic calming. It's retraining people is the big part of it, because everybody is so used to the lights and stopping and, you know, and, uh, it's just a different brain pattern, I think.
I hate them.
You'll get used to it. How long have you been there?
Boy, I've, I've had them where I was. I hated them there too. I mostly hate the two lane ones because they are very confusing.
Yeah, you gotta know which lane to get into and if you miss it, yeah, those are harder, but, you know.
But a one lane.
On one point two point eight, provided pedestrian crosswalks as part of resurfacing, new construction projects, new loc, just crosswalks in general. I've noticed that, you know, we, we put them up in places like downtown, you know, they're, the traffic is more congested there and people are more aware, so they're more useful there. But, you know, we have them sometimes like around the bayou, uh, where we don't have stop signs and traffic is going full, you know, thirty, thirty-five miles an hour. And then there's just no concern, and I still don't know how, how these get through or what group they go through, or whether it goes TRC. All of a sudden, they're just up, and I've written the city, Mark and everybody about them, and I just get no response of what group this has gone through. And specifically, the one around the bayou that I'm talking about is because it, when you see a crosswalk, you think it's safe to cross. And there is, in no way is it safe to cross in some of these areas where traffic is going thirty-five miles an hour. There's no lights, like there are downtown where there's no risk of, of car moving that fast. And now you're telling people and that it's safe to walk, to cross here. And then when we added the stop sign around the bayou, then it was like, well, we have to put the stop sign, cause we put the crosswalk. But then we put two crosswalks on a curve, on a blind spot.
Peppas's, Lucas's Peppas?
Old House, yeah, the corner, right at the end of the bayou, you can't see.
You can't see.
And I've run there all the time. I would never cross there running. And now you're telling people it's safe to walk here, and it is not safe to walk there.
You know where the Victoria House is? Victoria House, that Victorian, if you were going west or even south.
Anyway, yeah.
Anyway, it's on the curb. So someone who wants to cross there and is on the opposite side coming into town, they would never see the car, that car that's coming toward Howard Park, going toward Howard Park, they wouldn't see that person.
Is that, was that Project Admin?
Yes.
Well, and, and me, there's even, there's a house, there's a car that actually drives, uh, someone had a camera that drove right through the stop sign into like the bayou, missing it entirely. So, and that was just missing the whole stop sign in general, but, um, yeah, and I got no clear answer as to how those crosswalks went up with those. And yet, the argument was that when we had to put the stop sign, so there's five stop signs around by Orange Street in, in Spring Bay, was that, well, if we put the crosswalk up, we have to put a stop sign. But then we put two crosswalks and no stop signs in the most dangerous like area that should never be crossed.
Has anybody reached out to, um, to, uh, the police department and?
I did, and, and apparently Officer Boone does that, which I don't, I mean, I love Officer Boone for crime prevention, but like, there's just this weird roundabout through traffic studies that's just apparently, from, from what I've learned, if you just complain enough, one person can complain enough and get two stop signs put on Grand Boulevard, so.
Yeah, I don't know the history of, of, of what went on, you know, but it, it was a city project, you know, Project Admin, you know.
But I, there's no way to figure out what group is, who's, who is, um, vetting these things for safety? There's just, there's no safety vetting at all.
And, and, and I'm gonna add to yours, cause it makes a lot of sense. Even on Tarpon Avenue from Pinellas Avenue going east, we have three crosswalks in a short segment.
Yeah.
Whereas people can actually walk, one crosswalk, they would walk either direction or sidewalk to go to the one at the railroad track.
Yeah.
That one has a history. It proceeds, yeah, no, that, um.
And, but even those have lights, but the one, the other ones that are on the thirty-five mile an hour roadway don't have lights or anything.
What it does though, because it has the lights and they, and the person pushes it, it's now creating a traffic jam in a way.
I mean, I, you know, I, I will say this, the city has, you know, an engineer record that, you know, I assume was involved in the, you know, the design and putting those things in, you know, so.
That all these things like are going through, but there's really no, I have never been provided a clear answer on who provides a safety evaluation and, and where the public input gets into that safety evaluation. There's no public hearings for any of these things.
If we add some sort of a policy in here, and I don't know how this implements itself, but I'm certainly willing to put in a policy that basically says that, you know, new crosswalks, you know, must be evaluated, crosswalk, you know, locations must be evaluated for safety and something, something, I'm trying to think, you know, my.
Why you guys are all thinking, I, I, I got lost on this. What was the, what was the, what was the policy that you had brought up?
It's the one.
I mean fundamentally, who reviewed?
One point two point eight.
Thank you. Okay, so there's some concern that they're not working right, how they get done. And you're thinking that maybe that could be adjusted in a way to address that concern?
Yeah, I think it's.
For safety purposes.
Yeah, for safety.
You should have both the fire department and, um, the police department weigh on, weigh in on certain things.
I mean, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that I think that they were fully involved in that. But I was not myself personally involved in it, so I can't state that with a hundred percent certainty, but typically, you know, anything like that would have had Public Works, Police, Fire, everybody looking at it, um, prior to its, prior to the installation going in. I don't know what drove that project.
Question on how you'd like it to read or a suggestion on policy?
Because I need to, well, it's fair to the residents and the people that live around there to know how, have some input into these things going through, cause it's not just crosswalks, it's also stop signs. And I mean, it's not, I, I know how the, these stop signs come about and it's not, they go through, they might go through those things, but it comes from a complaint from a resident, but that is not necessarily talked to around the other residents.
Understand, I understand.
Somebody wants a stop, a stop sign here and then the neighbors.
I'm so sorry. Is, is that relevant, right, how stop signs get put up? I don't know.
Well, I was, I was saying in reference to crosswalks, because crosswalks have to sometimes be by, by stop signs, so. And in the terms of public, this is transportation and transportation has to do with public safety, and that's a huge concern in my community, to me. So I think it's relevant.
So can you add language that address the issues we just talked about? But I'd also ask it, is it possible, because what I heard. But I'd also ask it, is it possible, because what I heard by changing the language a little bit to, to evaluate. I wouldn't be asking to consider not just that we're providing pedestrian crosswalks or evaluating the need for pedestrian crosswalks. The need as a part of the, um, where did I see it now? As as a part of resurfacing or new construction and I would like to add existing roadway too. So that they reevaluate some of them that aren't working.
Yeah, I would mean, just, I mean, to me, just the prioritized locations for new crosswalks and the multimodal master, but it's just so, that's just saying, that's just a broad place. You can just put them anywhere, basically, saying prioritize based on somebody calling in and saying, I like a crosswalk here.
Okay, so I do wanna get one thing, clarify one thing, you know that it is legal for a pedestrian to cross at any intersection.
Yes, but they do it at their own risk. Right now, we're, right now, we're guiding them to go to the flashing light and the flashing light stops them and the next one is about twenty-five feet away, another one.
Right.
That's why.
I I think, I I I think I get the point of there may be a saturation of them in a certain area of town, yes, I I get it. But, um, crosswalks, I think usually get put in when they, it's, um, you know, if you, not in, if you build it, they will come. It's a, they're already there, so we need to build it kind of thing.
No, cause they're, they're putting them places that haven't been there for four years since.
But I think, I think Caroline's point is that people are are functionally using the, crossing the streets in those areas.
But that's why I'm, it's not working like that now, that's my point.
So maybe we just need, we need to evaluate them in the the plan that we're doing.
Well, it doesn't say evaluate, so evaluate should be in there.
Include existing, existing too, so it's not just about new.
Not just providing, prioritizing them, but evaluating if they're even necessary.
Any more questions about, uh, objective one point two on page two?
Just briefly on the landscaping policy one point, two point eleven, are, is that city landscaping or is that implementing landscaping requirements into your land development code?
So I think, um, this is targeted towards city doing that. But it's also one of those things that if we have it here, it's good for when we're dealing with outside entities.
I I would say both.
The policy one, two dot twelve, I think, I know what it means, but it says establish requirements and incentives for bike racks, bike racks, benches, rest facilities and lockers. Is my thought about the bike racks, is that, um, like rental bike?
No, this is really meant to be like a place that if I'm using a bike, I can lock my bike up, yeah.
See, that would be something I would, I would like to see in the land development code, having bike parking requirements and I believe that would be previous.
We have it in the SMART code, we don't have it, I don't think, in the land development code.
Do you give parking credits for it currently?
I believe we do have a parking credit that if you provide bicycle parking, you can get a reduction in your vehicle parking. So we do it as an incentive in the land development code now, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question about the benches. And the reason I bring it up is I noticed with the influx of homeless. I remember one time I was sitting at a light on alternate nineteen right there by, by, uh. What's the place called where they, where they have the food, the shelter?
Shepherd Center?
Shepherd Center, thank you. Anyway, there was a bench, a city bench, right to my left, if I'm facing, uh, north, right to my left, where that Copenhagen Cafe and all that is. Well, it's been removed and I don't know anything about it other than when I saw the bench, I took note of it because I saw a police officer rousting a homeless man that was sleeping on the bench. So I think that's why they removed it, maybe. I actually got in a fight with my neighbor because she thought everybody ought to be able to sleep on the benches if they want. I said, no, I think everybody should be able to sit on the benches if they want. But anyway, are we having a problem with?
I know, I know historically that there have been, in certain areas of downtown, there have been problems with, um, the unhoused, sleeping on.
Cause it's nice to have those benches.
It is. It's a, it's a push pull.
And then what about rest facilities? Are we talking about bathrooms? I mean.
The people that shower at Sunset Beach with phosphates and all that.
Where are these gonna go?
Uh, that's why we would prioritize locations in the multimodal master plan. I mean, uh, like having the public restroom at the the Sponge Docks, you know, that's a good idea.
It's already there, I mean, there's just no.
We may not really need anything else.
I don't think there was any place else we're gonna put restrooms, I mean, just up on the, where would.
Well, if, I mean, if we're gonna do the, the pickleball thing, maybe we would need to look in it.
That could also include things like water fountains and, you know.
We could get, we should start with one at Craig Park.
But we're showers, where are you gonna put showers? They should have showers.
Not, not, not a.
No, the homeless are taking showers at Sunset Beach. And I don't wanna watch them watching, washing their butt cracks and their balls and I don't wanna watch that.
I get that, um, that's.
Jordan, are you okay with the?
But I don't know that we can solve that with.
No, no, no.
But you know what I mean, I mean it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see that part, yeah, one point, two fourteen, uh, I'm, I'm totally against actively pursuing this parking garage. That's like really out there.
Yeah, the word actively is.
That's a little strong.
I mean, I think there's a need for parking garage, but it sounds like it's, it sounds like it's supposed to go there at the Sponge Docks.
That's a, that's a.
Put this in here.
That's one of those legacy, that's been in the, it's been in there for a long time, so.
Well, it can sit in there a long time then.
You know, um.
Actively pursue does not sound.
But does that leave it open for a developer who wants to do a parking garage that is a pay parking garage?
No one's coming forward.
There's a likelihood that if you did a city one, it would be a paid parking garage though too. There's a likelihood if you did a city garage that it would be a paid parking garage too, though.
So you could reward this to say.
Don't wanna see it at the Sponge Docks.
Evaluate partnerships with private sector to construct, so it's a little softer than actively pursuing.
Affordable housing since they wanna be in everything. Private sector and affordable housing.
They can build garage underneath their floor. What is, what is, what's the definition of mobility hub?
So that would be going back to our, our equity, our transportation equity, it would have more, more modes in it, so it would be, um.
It's not just a parking garage, it could be.
Rideshare.
Could be rideshare, it could be bike rentals, could be, you know.
Towers.
Well, you know why, I, well, now I'm glad I got, understand what that term means. That gives me a little bit more concern because when you put a mobility hub or of various features. Downtown Sponge Docks is already crowded and slow to move from point A to point B. I can understand having something, but maybe it's something that's on the perimeter of the Sponge Docks. It says in the Sponge Docks.
Well, I mean, it's, this is an opportunity thing, what, what's available, you know, so I don't know that it means to be in the center. It could be, like you said, on a, on a corner or it could be, you know, yeah, I mean, it's, I think, you know, the idea being if we can have a central location where people can park or get there from various modes and then walk and, and, and keep the vehicles from cruising dodeck.
Do you think it would ever be that they shut that to vehicle traffic?
Sponge Docks?
We've had that discussion before and.
No, that's a no.
It's kind of a hard no, I think.
You know, they tried to improve the stormwater drainage and the whole width of the dock and that went down and a smashing success.
It drowned.
Don't make me dredge up bad memories.
Let's just kill these two right now.
This is the most fun I've had at a planning and sonning board meeting ever.
She has entered your mind. The mind melds. Can I ask a question? What is a transit circulator?
So that would be, it, it, it has a loop route, like it would have a fixed route, um, that kind of runs in a loop. We actually used to have one in Tarpon Springs that, that connected from the downtown to the Sponge Docks. So it's, um, it's not, it's not taking you outside of Tarpon Springs, it's taking you around Tarpon Springs.
Oh, okay, a roadway.
Well, it would be, it could be a.
No, like a jolly trolley type thing.
It's a little local jolly trial.
Oh, nice.
Or a jitney. Or a van down by the river.
Okay, uh, since we've lost two members, we're about to lose a third. We'll wait for everyone to come back before we like sign off on one, two and move on to one, three. I'm gonna excuse myself also.
I'll go with.
Oh, no, we need to have at least three.
Sit down.
You gotta wait, you have to wait.
Taking a five minute recess.
Caroline, what do they consider one-way pairs?
Okay, so that would be, um, cause we have such narrow right of way. It would be if you turned, and it's also hard because we're not on a strict grid, but in a strict grid system, you would have one's going this way and one's going that way.
Okay, yeah, they did that a lot up north, streets that used to be two-way because of the parking constraints. You would almost never get side-by-side vehicle passage.
Would you like a butterscotch?
Or not a butterscotch, a Werther's.
Werther's original.
Anybody else?
Oh, no, thank you.
Pat, I'll throw one at you.
They're really good in vodka.
What?
We should put a bunch of Werther's in a vodka bottle.
It makes caramel, but like tasting, huh? Wait, you put it in the dishwasher like neck up?
Yeah, yeah, you just.
To heat it.
Tight, tight to heat it to melt it.
Oh, you put a cap on it?
Put a cap on it and it'll melt the caramel in the vodka.
The vodka's still in the bottle.
I never would have thought of that.
I'll show you afterwards on YouTube.
Anyone?
No, you just, you just got a, a caramel.
All the Werther's.
In that vodka.
Been upstaged.
Would you like Werther's? I'll trade you.
Agreed. If everyone's ready to move beyond objective one point two. And on to objective one point three.
Construct new roads that complete existing roadway segments?
So that, that little piece of disc that we were just talking about like that.
Is it Saint Pink? It's, oh, there is a grid system.
Yeah. Well, I mean downtown Tarpon is a grid system.
Yeah, I guess it is.
Policy one point, three point four, preserve existing alleys and work to create new alleys within the MMTD. So within memory on this board, two to three years ago, this board voted to vacate if not the entire alley, at least most of it, because that alley had been abandoned or unused reasonably close to here, like right over there. And because the new owners were like, hey, there's this, it wasn't an alley at that point. So I bring that up because it, it strikes me as curious as here we're codifying it as a policy, but yet just recently this board allowed a vacation of said alley. And although it was convenient and it kind of made sense, it appears that we're at odds with what we've actually done and what the policy may be.
Which policy?
So this is.
One dot three dot three. No, dot four, sorry, one, three, four.
And that's a, that's a legacy policy.
So the MMTD and the SMART code very much relies on, in, in order for the, I won't call them design standards, but for the form-based standards of the SMART code to work. There's, there's requirements in there that if there's an alley available, doesn't need to actually improve, but if you have a platted alley that's, you know, that your first priority is to take your access, if, let's say you're building an infill residential house, is to take that access off of the alley. So that's why this, this policy is in there. If you have a situation where it's just simply not feasible, then, and I don't, I don't know the situation around which one, everyone we're talking about right now, I'm not ringing it up, but, but the, then, then yes, you can, you know, there's really no reason not to vacate them, get them turned over. Sometimes they're, they're wet, you know, they've got, sometimes, you know, they have wetlands in the rear of them, they're not functional anyway. So, but yeah, the overall policy is to, is to preserve those within that SMART code operating area, which is kind of coterminous. MMTD is a little bigger than that, to preserve that, that future use from a redevelopment perspective because it's, you know, you get a much better walkable environment when you don't have curb cuts, you know, into every driveway, you know, crossing every sidewalk. So it's, it's a, it's a form-based code preference.
I was only bringing it up that I grew up in a neighborhood with alleys, I'm an alley fan, not everyone is, kind of an alley cat, actually, so. It just struck me as odd that this board had recently voted to vacate. And in fact, it wasn't that long ago, we voted to vacate another alley. And what struck me as odd is not the alley portion of it, but of course, when they are vacated, then that property is distributed in most cases equally to both property owners. And that strikes me as a gift that not all the residents of the community get to take part of. There was one in particular that was very generous gift that we gave to a developer, but I'll leave that alone. Just meaning that, hey, we're giving away city land to someone else, so.
First choice would be to keep it.
Right, so I think that if this policy was a legacy policy and it had been brought to the board at that time, we probably would not have vacated that alley. And it, again, it's just right over there where these undeveloped lots and they might be wetlands. We just said, sure, you want it, we'll give it to you.
I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to remember which, which, which project you're talking about, but now that, now that it's definitely reserved, it's just, which, which project?
So if we're supposed to save them, we'll save them. It was, it was, they were all undeveloped and so it was just single-family residential and there's only about three houses there now. And we've gotta be about three years back and it allowed that residence to dive deeper into their lot because it reduced that rear setback by X number of feet.
So one of the things I will point out about the previous language, um, is that it was previously specific to the CRA area. And I'm not sure whether or not the property that you're referencing was within the CRA area. And it's being revised to alleys within the MMTD.
It was specific to the CRA, which is a smaller area than.
What, what made it, what, what, why did you want to consider changing it from CRA to?
So, I wish, we should have had a boundary map for the MMTD to show you what that was.
This is really hard for me to imagine.
Yeah, yeah.
Just put an asterisk on that one, maybe we would revisit that.
Yeah, but, but in a nutshell, the, oh, okay.
Oh, Patricia, you're amazing. And those are all alleys.
Now I understand what we wanted to.
But basically, if, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to remember, it essentially goes from, like, uh, Huey, for the, so Huey, north, south, it doesn't go all the way over there. But it encompasses all the sponge docks, I think it goes south to Klosterman. So it's kind of like the old, the traditional old, well, it doesn't, basically, it's, you know, the, the more suburban west half of the city is not in it. So it's kind of that old, you know, original platted area of the city between nineteen and the bayous. And so the, where, and where traditionally you did have alleys platted, and so they're, whether they're used or not, um, so, so in some instances, you know, you know, application of that policy, you really kind of have to take into effect the idea, or the consideration of, if every house on the, on that, on a particular street is already developed with a front loading garage, uh, you know, preserving the alley may be lost at that point, you know, unless there's some other use that we want for it, so, you know, I, I don't know that it's a hard and fast, like, anything.
Well, originally, weren't they all designed to be like, street fronts and pushed towards the front, so they were entered?
Right, I mean, that's what the intent was, um, but, you know, we, you know, we get pushed back today, even in, you know, in the, in the MMTD, in the CRA, in the smart code area, when we tell a developer that's trying to do an infill residential home, you got an alley there, you've got to rear-load it and pull it, pull the building to the street, well, that's not what my clients want, and I'm like, well, you know, what do you want me to tell you? That's, you know, that's, we're trying to promote that walkable, you know, neo-traditional, if you will, you know, street frontage and development pattern that we had going back to the nineteen twenties, thirties, and forties, so that's what was there, and we want to keep it, so.
Yes, thank you. Go.
I want to talk about one point three point seven, and it's only, if you read it, it talks about freight and trucking, but I'd like to have some discussion between us about what I see as a continuing health and safety and growing issue with congestion, and that is, is there a way for us to either create a policy or modify this policy that relates to Amazon, FedEx, UPS, uh, all stopping in the middle of the road? And, and that, right now, if we did that ourselves, we'd get a ticket, that's called, that's called a careless driving. And how can we either modify this language or create a policy that should be considered about that?
I thought they were talking about the automated deliveries, and not just like the drones, but other.
It could be, but right now, until they do that, they're all parking right now in the middle of the road, and it's something we need to, we should be considering on behalf of the city and the citizens.
This might be one of those, a policy that's, you know, a policy to evaluate a policy type of thing, and, you know, I, I don't know that we can, like, off of the cuff, say, we need to do this, I think what we probably would, you know, you know, establish a, you know, a, a process or something, yeah.
Because to me, it's a, this is a, a national issue, it's not just us, but maybe there is something someone else is doing, but it, it is creating, I mean, if post office, if the UPS, U S P S, whatever, it pulls over and puts mail in our mailbox, and they get out of the road, then why can't Amazon? And put, and we can, and it may mean that we put a place for them to put our packages, or they pull over by the mailbox and they go up and put it on our doorstep, but right now, they park in the road. And there are times that they have more than one box and they're there for quite a long time.
I really feel like that's more of an enforcement issue.
Yeah, but if you don't have a policy that draws the, see, right now, we have something that talks about evaluate freight, truck routing alternatives, that's asking, it's an action saying, city, do something about evaluating this and come up with a recommendation. I'm just saying, why don't we have another type item like this that does that, evaluate? And make its recommendations.
And also, which I've noticed too, is that the yellow lines on the road where you're not supposed to park, I don't think have been repainted for like thirty years. I know, because there's, there's in front of my house. And that's, but part of it is there's no parking signs, but like, there's, there's other places that should have no parking signs too, and even just something like that, right there, I mean, I don't think any of those have been updated for years either. And people don't even ignore, like, it's like, it's an old sign that I don't even see it either, because it's been there since forever.
Yeah, and look what the sponge dock, well, look what the city did for the benefit of the sponge docks, they said, you know what, trucks aren't going to come between these hours. Right. Well, we have to come up with something that addresses this, it might be, even if, like I said, it just says evaluate, let's have something that says we're going to evaluate these, you know, what do you call them? Is there a name for them, or do we actually spell out their names?
Even if we already have these rules, just to reinforce them and like, update them, because I think they already exist where people can't park there, but it's no way of, um.
Yeah, um, I mean, my first thought would be to add on to this particular policy, you know, evaluate freight, truck, and.
Other alternative.
Well, I would say, and, uh, and delivery service.
Yes, other, other types of delivery service.
Routing and parking alternatives.
Yes, there you go.
Yeah, that's.
If, if I could.
You make a good point too, Regina, because then you, by keeping that last part, alternatives through technology, and then what you just said about technology, it would force some of those to start looking at alternative delivery methods.
Well, I, I feel like there was something, I feel like there was last legislative session, I was trying to see if I could find it, a proposed bill regarding electric delivery vehicles and like, use, the use of mopeds and scooters and things like that for, in lieu of the big Amazon trucks.
Yep. Now, the Amazon trucks are now using electric vehicles, but they're just as big, actually, they're bigger now, so they stay in the road.
What I'm seeing are a lot more though, are, are the, the small, like, the mini vans doing that, you know, last mile delivery, I know during holiday season, in the past, they've contacted us about, you know, they would set up like a temporary hub, almost like a pod, and then they would distribute from there, sort of like during peak season and stuff, I don't know if they're still doing that or not.
Interesting is, all of them, well, at least I'd say the majority of them, have, when they make their deliveries or making them to residential, and you've got the big FedEx that are going to the businesses, but they usually have those alleys and all that, but those that are going to the residents, most all of them have driveways, but they won't go in them because they don't want, they don't want to be tied up having to back out of that driveway to get into the traffic, so what they do is block the traffic.
Yeah.
Well, my mailbox is all the way up at my door, so even my mailman has to come to my. Everybody's got to come to my door.
Where I live, it's a, it's a private, and it cul-de-sacs. Cul-de-sacs, and I don't know how many, I would say three times this year so far, those Amazon trucks, we have a cul-de-sac that has stones that are like in about two or three feet around the circle, have ended up in the middle of our circle on top of those stones. They, they fly, they fly, those big trucks, and then they lose control.
I mean, I think, I mean, a lot of that unfortunately is just, you know, opportunistic and, you know, there just aren't enough police officers anywhere to be able to police that.
Well, they wouldn't do it in a private area anyway.
Yeah, yeah, that's, well, yeah.
Yeah. But I, I mean, I'm sure it's happening everywhere, I mean, they're just.
So we'll make a revision to that.
Yeah, I'll, we'll do the additive, yeah.
But before we walk away from that, since policy one point three point seven was new, what was the impetus, your word, of, of including that, I like it, but I just wanted to hear maybe more what you were actually thinking of that concept.
Um, I, some of it I think is, you know, Nick hit on, is, you know, we just, we have, you know, we have problems downtown, we have problems at the docks, we have, and so it's always kind of been an open, ongoing problem, you know. Is it unreasonable to require businesses, you know, to get their deliveries, so they're, they're, unfortunately, they're kind of caught in the middle too, it's like, okay, I need, you know, two thousand pounds of flour delivered to my bakery, well, that's coming in on a big truck because they're, that's the problem, and so they, because they got, you know, fifteen hundred of those deliveries that they got to make in Pinellas County, so everybody's defaulting to the largest vehicles to do these deliveries, and so then they come down, like you said, and they park on Do Deck, and they, you know, or wherever, and they say that you, we have those, I mean, I came, I was, I went, I was coming up Safford Avenue, and there was a semi-trailer parked on the trail. And, I mean, in the mid, I mean, I, I, I just about lost my mind, I mean, I was like, what are you doing? I mean, that's the kind, so, I, I don't, it, this is a really hard thing to, to regulate, and so I, so I think it was something that we recognize as an ongoing problem, I think it probably picks up a lot of things, I think, so that, it's, it's a, you know, what can we do, what are other places doing, is there a way to, you know, can you, if we adopt a local ordinance that says deliveries can only take place in certain hours, or you can't exceed a certain vehicle size or weight or whatever, you know, what are those options? So it was meant to kind of look at it from a holistic standpoint.
We've got what?
Routes as well, streets and.
Yeah, routes, because you got Live Oak, you got now Mirs that are two good routes.
The advantage aspect is because streets and stormwater identify where people hop the curb, the trail and the sidewalk are not made to support those trucks. They get cracked, they get broken, and so we end up having to put them on our list to fix, so that's part of the.
Or those trucks that go down to Decanese, they shouldn't ever be on like Grand, there's no reason for them to be there, but they'll end up there, and then they can't turn on like Hope and, yeah.
So how, how does one, since this obviously is actually a very serious issue that has been around, how, how do you move it away from? It's, it's, it's a good objective, it's a good policy, but it, it, it seems to me, it, it, it's maybe not at the right place, could it be sprinkled somewhere else? And move it to traffic enforcement so that there's a more proactive, or does it need to move to an entire zone of its own, like a special area plan?
Well, I think it's something that would be part of that mobility plan, and so, I, I, I mean, I think it's something that we need to incorporate into the overall update of the MMTD. You know, when we do that, that, that's a planning process that's going to have to take place.
And we, perfect segue, because that's what I was gonna, I wanted to bring up an idea, so logistics, having a logistic facility, location in the city that allows for these vehicles to stage and unload, and what perfect location than the waste management area? I mean, there's a lot of land there, and you've got now mirrors for them to come in on, they stage their, and then now the smaller vehicles of the merchants go pick up their merchandise and take it to them. And so I think there should be something to look at with regards to, to taking advantage, because that, that becomes income generating for the city.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Is, is that, in some strange way, part of that multimodal, uh, circular location that we were referring to about six pages back, where there's a hub of whether it's pedestrian traffic or tourist traffic, and then there's a section for commercial traffic, we're way out there on the stratosphere right now.
You know, that could, I mean, yeah, you know, I mean, yeah, it could be, you know, I think all of these are, yeah.
That's part of that sprinkle.
That guy, that meme that is.
So I, I think, you know, I think all of this, you know, gets captured through that MMTD, you know, update and planning process that clearly needs to happen, I think that's, I think all of these things are things we need to be pushing toward and pursuing in the future.
Is there, uh, I know it's going bold here, but if we modify, as we're going to modify one, three, seven, to include the alternative of, of the service, how about we add language about a location for them to stage? Concept, to consider that.
Alternatives to technology, signage, to reduce conflicts and infrastructure damage, and potential commercial staging facilities.
Yeah.
Slash areas.
There you go.
Objective one point four.
And maybe this is throughout this one point four and other areas in this, in this, in these objectives, but when, when I look at just one point four point four, we're cooperative with Ford Pinellas, Pinellas County, and other local governments. Do we, are we intentionally leaving out Pasco County, because we have but Pasco County?
In this instance, we are.
Yeah, for this, for this particular one, we are because it is a Pinellas County centric, the, 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 the multimodal impact fee ordinance is Pinellas County.
What about in the other areas, because I seem to think we talk about Pinellas County, and because we butt to Pinellas County on the, on the south end of us, but should we ever be saying something about Pasco County, because we have city property to the north?
Not, not in this instance, not in this particular, yeah, because the, the, it is, because it is a, Penellas County multimodal impact fee ordinance, yeah.
Not in this one here, not in this instance. I agree, and I understand that, but I'm saying.
I, I hear what you're saying.
What I've been reading, all these, in all these, Pasco County doesn't seem to be, get brought up as a, as another agency other than saying other agency.
So we do, we do refer to Pasco County Public Transportation.
Maybe do, do a word search for Pasco County on all of this and see how many times.
But yeah, I mean, you're, you're bringing up a valid point, there are others, there are some things that we should coordinate with Pasco County.
Yeah, because they could, it could be a benefit to us, plus it could also help control events. Yeah, that's good.
Do these objectives and policies take into account or look towards facilitating transportation, because what I've noticed, my uneducated observations is the traffic coming from, to and from Pasco, to Tarpen, Palm Harbor, Clearwater, I mean, they're, they're coming south from home, and then they're going back north to home at the end of the day, and it's massive
Yep.
traffic, is there any way to coordinate something that's multi-county or that will?
So that is, there, there is coordination on a regional basis between PSTA, Pasco, Hillsboro, I mean.
Yes.
There's somewhere coming from Hillsboro, coming back to Pinellas County.
Okay, I, I, and I think, um, the new regional MPO, that things like that might get done better, but there is, there's a tri, there's, there was a tri-county meeting. So there, yeah.
I mean, we, yeah, you're absolutely a hundred percent right, if you look at in-migration and out-migration on a daily basis, they're all coming in and then they all go out, and it's like, if you could just put a toll road at the, you know, to the north, maybe, you know, but.
Be wealthy.
And that's, that, unfortunately, that's, you know, that's the nature of what, you know, Pasco unfortunately has a lot of land and a lot of places to build, and, and you see it. It's not, uh.
Not pretty.
And, and startlingly, and the number, so many of them just still seem to work in, in Pinellas County, you know, so it's that drive to you qualify because of the cost of housing, so.
That's the first time I heard that, drive to you qualify.
Drive to qualify, yeah, yeah.
I haven't heard that before.
You did?
No, I have not.
Oh, me either.
Yeah, it's in the, in the mortgage business, you know, drive to qualify.
One point four point one one. Development projects must contribute their fair share. I, I love the sentence, but would their fair share be? I, I love the sentence, but would their fair share be? Who decides their fair share? Did I move ahead too far?
No, no, that's actually good, their fair share in accordance with section so and so, so and so of the fair share standards.
That's gotta be in coordination with the.
I actually got that right, okay.
That's good.
Like, I mean, we're all in on their fair share, but.
I need to find this one because there was something specific about that specifically.
Didn't we run across that before in something?
Well, we don't have to like delineate it at this moment, but if you would just underline that and.
It's proportionate fair share.
Yeah, it's the proportionate fair share program.
Well, there is one there on fair share twelve, I mean, one four twelve, there's a proportionate fair share program.
Oh, hello.
So there is a program for.
Oh, there it was, if I had just gone forward.
Is that for develop- developers to participate in the fair share program?
Yeah.
There it goes, and it even defines fair shares based on the proportion of net external trips.
So, should policy one point four point one one and policy one point four point one two either be combined or reversed?
Flip flop them.
Don't?
Yeah, make twelve, eleven and eleven twelve.
Don't they end at the same result?
Twelve should be eleven, eleven should be twelve. Because continue to implement the goal and to keep, keep it going. And then down below, if you put eleven to twelve, then talks about developed projects must contribute their.
So, all right, so a little, little, little history here, firing up the wayback machine. When, when the MMTD was put in was, we, we had a multimodal quality of service report, study done that identified sidewalk segments, road segments, um, bicycle facilities. It, it, it identified a, a, a list of capital needs. And so what was supposed to happen, and the board never fully adopted a requirement to require, and so it, it was in addition, so that, okay, I gotta, gotta back up. The, the Pinellas County Multimodal Impact Fee Ordinance has two schedules. They have a downtown schedule, which are reduced fees for transportation impact fees for new development. Then you have your general schedule, which is everything else. So our CRA in the sponge docs is in the reduced fee schedule. So if I build a house in, you know, the downtown somewhere, my multi, my, my transportation or my multimodal impact fee is less than if it was somewhere outside of that district. So, when we put the MMTD in place, and again, this was in, that was part of a concurrency management system then. So, we were, we identified a list of capital improvements. And then there was a dollar figure tied back to trip generation, net increase in trip generation that we could apply to a developer when they came in. So it basically, it was a second pay and go. In addition to your Pinellas County multimodal impact fee, you either had to pay a fee within the MMTD, or you could actually do an equivalent project. So we actually got some sidewalk segments improved and things like that that were not really adjacent to a particular project, but you could pick something. So, those were kind of negotiated. And then all of that candidly has just kind of evaporated. So, and it, and we, we brought an ordinance to the board way back when and said, we want to officially, my ordinance adopt this. The board was not willing to at that point in time. And so it's kind of just been in, basically in a state of limbo. So, that's what these policies were originally developed for. How we continue to do that moving forward or maybe revive that again as part of the update to the MMTD? You know, because you don't, you, you can't, because we don't have concurrency per se anymore, you know, we don't have that tool. So it has to be a political decision or a policy decision, I should say, to say, okay, we still have this list of deficiencies inside this multimodal transportation district that, um, developers are going to pay for in addition to your regular multimodal impact fees through Pinellas County. And so that, that was long-winded, I apologize, but hopefully it gave you a little context and history of where these came from.
So that does need to be then adopted and implemented into your LDC?
Uh, in some way or ordinance or something, yes, I would say so, if we're going to continue to try, if we wanted to try to do that.
Okay.
So that policy, development projects must contribute their fair share towards pedestrian bike and transit facilities. I think we probably need to, you know, again, as part of the MMTD update, you know, evaluate uh, capital projects necessary, create a per-trip fee, that kind of thing. We can, we can kind of roll back to some of the language that was before, but we have to have an implementing policy to, or an ordinance or something to, to push that back into place, so.
That all made perfect sense.
Gosh.
It really did. I, I stayed with you the whole time. It also explains why we're missing so many sidewalks. Can you give it more teeth if I were to encourage, perhaps even strengthen it? Because it sounded to me that there is an existing policy or ordinance required by Pinellas County that we're in fact deficient of.
No, that one we're, no, no, we, we absolutely, you know, we absolutely abide by the Pinellas County Multimodal Impact Fee requirements.
Okay.
And we have, we have a downtown schedule, you know, we have an area that it applies to, then we, everything else goes to schedule B. Anytime a building permit comes through, we evaluate every building permit, every development for, you know, does it, you know, if it's new development and obviously has, has, has an impact fee. If it's a redevelopment, we look at it on the net increase, um, so that we make sure that we're still collecting those, those fees. And those go into a special transportation fund.
So if it wasn't the fee side, if it was the lack of the ordinance being adopted by the BOC? Is there a way that we can move that a step forward? I know that we have no power in that, but is there a way that within this policies that you're writing right now? That we could reflect back and encourage that policy?
Exactly, I think that's what we wanted, we would like to do.
My, my only question with that, with that though, is, is that essentially adopting a second transportation impact fee?
It, it's a multimodal impact fee, yes, um, or a mobility fee. Um, actually, I think we called it multimodal.
Is there any exclusivity with the MPO impact fee?
It's not actually through, it's, it's. The reason why we need this is because the, the county, uh, impact fee doesn't really account for the impacts that are created. It's, um, we have, Pinellas County has some of the lowest, it, it's, and the most needs, so. There's an additional need here. And so that's why on the previous one, we said, you know, let's work with Ford, connect Pinellas and everybody else to update that, the, the county ordinance.
And then?
And then.
And then bridge the gap with the local?
Yeah.
So there is a deficiency that's not being met.
So, and we, so we really do need, you know, we need to evaluate, you know, again, it's, it was around three things. It was around, you know, bicycle quality of service, pedestrian sidewalk quality of service, mobility or, um, transit quality of service or lack thereof. So, you know, there was a whole list of, and, and, and then roadway connections that still needed to be made. We've actually made a lot of progress on that. Um, you know, Mango going through was, you know, Mears Mango Connection was one, Safford was one. So there's, there's actually been a lot of projects that have been done that, um, you know, we can check off. But it's the other, you know, more mobility, you know, transit circulator, those trying to find funds and, you know, for those types of improvements and things. So I think, I think, you know, the update needs to be done. And then there needs to be an ordinance to implement a fee structure to fund those improvements on, for the long haul.
Would that exact verbiage be appropriate to install in one of these policies or is that?
I think policy one point four point one one just needs to be expanded again. And we'll, we can, we can, I hear, yeah, I think we're all in agreement of what we, what we want to do, so.
Yeah, I feel like the amount of development that's happened has not been proportionate to the, uh, our traffic situation.
Right.
Any other comments? Are we objective one point four? Okay to move on to objective one point five?
Yep.
I have a question about one point five point three. It says discourage development of low-density residential projects in locations that will increase urban sprawl and the dependency on the personal automobile.
Yeah, I don't like that either, but it looks like it's a statutory requirement.
I believe it is, yeah. Well, and, and, and it's one of those things that's, it's, it's actually more, it's actually more applicable to a place like Pasco County.
Yeah.
Where you go out in the middle of a ranch and you put in, you know, five thousand single-family homes and one choke point on the way. So, that's what it's really meant to discourage. Inside of our city, it's a little, it's just a little different. We just don't really have, that's what it really is, is meant to address.
Those are the cars that are congesting us, are theirs.
Exactly, exactly.
It's short, it's short objective section.
Yeah.
Uh, is everyone comfortable moving on to goal two?
Yes.
Yes.
Goal two.
There's Pasco County, Nick.
There's some, there's some gaps in the Pasco County. So skipping through one, two, one, one, two, three, four. Well, actually, I, I do, two, two, one, two, one, three. Coordinate with Pinellas County and DOT to connect existing and future deficiencies on county and state roadways. Doesn't Pasco County apply to that too, on our north end?
I don't think there's any harm there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so then I would continue on to the next page where we talk about Pasco County. And there's, so at, um, two, one, eight, coordinate with Pinellas County. And I'm saying Pasco County and DOT during the design phase of construction, reconstruction. But I'm also gonna ask, should we, I know what we're, it's saying for us to coordinate with them on their design and construction and resurfacing. Somehow, I brought it up last week.
We make them coordinate with us.
Oh, no, that we're excluding utility agencies.
Oh.
And they're a critical component to all the construction projects. So how do we integrate them into certain ones like this? Because to me, they should be involved. You, you're wanting to know about the DOTs and the Pinellas County reconsider, uh, coordinate with them. How do we make sure that they're, and I do know that DOT would be coordinating with utilities? Pinellas County would be coordinating with utilities, but would you be involved in seeing that? All you would see is their design.
Right.
And if they had, if they had extensive relocations to be done by the utilities, you wouldn't know about it till it actually came. Unless your people are reviewing the, your phased plans, but then it would have to be your utility people.
I mean, I think the only thing that we, we kind of get the, that we do get to review kind of by default or is if it's our right of way.
Yes, but when they're coming into a. If Pinellas, if, uh, alternate nineteen, and Pasco County's doing something to alternate nineteen and, and they're coordinating and they're keeping you in the loop, but you're not really getting, I know you would get their plans to review the phased plans, but is someone looking at them here to look at the utility? What's happening to the utilities that are gonna impact moving their facilities on that corridor? That are gonna impact you on your road that you haven't even done anything with? So somehow we gotta work in the language that, that at least on all of this section that deals with intergovernmental agencies, that we have language that, that the utility shall be, you know.
I mean, I don't know how much we can compel another, like Pasco County to, to share.
Well, they share their drawings, if they're, if they're doing design and, and that's, and that's gonna end at Pasco County, Pinellas County. They're, they're coordinating with, they're, they're coordinating with Pinellas County, they should also be coordinating with the city of Tarpon Springs if it falls into the city limit of Tarpon Springs. But just.
I assume that's happening.
Yeah, just how, somehow we have to work.
So, well, I'm, I'm, I'm having a little trouble understanding. So, um, for instance, like for Ann Cote Road, that's a Pinellas County project that they're working on right now. When they're done with their preliminary engineering report, you know, I.
You're seeing it.
I will review it and project admin will, will review it. And so that'll have like utilities, really like, probably like a thirty percent design.
Yeah, they'll have, they'll have whatever utility company furnished something. It's when you start to get into the sixty, the ninety and a hundred percent that you start to, you should be getting their plans for review. The city would get them and go to the city engineer and the city engineer's gotta determine, okay, let me send that to utilities because utilities need to see what's happening with the utility companies that are bringing their facilities and stopping them. You know, if they stop, if, if, if Duke Energy stopped their power lines adjustments and it happens now coming into Pinellas County and, and Tarpon Springs, it actually could impact us here in Tarpon. And that's why I'm, I'm not seeing a, a thing that talks about that. We did it in that one interagency, y'all were gonna make those changes.
Right.
But just look at this section and see if there's, how do you word language in like that to, to, or even talk to your, you know, is it Bill, Bill Roberts or Bob Roberts? And ask them what, what do they get when they do get review of plans?
So, don't, don't lose sight of what the objective is.
Yes, I did.
So it's really to coordinate, ensure existing and proposed development intensity, housing and employment patterns are consistent with transportation facilities that serve those areas.
Is that the statement? Where are you reading that?
I'm, that's the objective, the, the end of objective two point one. And so it, it's really about, you know, consistency with.
Oh, to ensure that existing and proposed development intensity, housing.
But, I, to your point, you know, let us, we'll, we can, yeah, pick up utility providers as well somehow in this.
And you may not if it's stat, but, but it's, okay, that's all I had.
Any other comments under goal two? Well, then we'll close goal two and it appears the end of the transportation element. Before we move on to another topic, I would like to say that I thought that that was a great package. And I genuinely appreciate some of the new additions in regards to, um, the emphasis on multimodal, which is bicycle and pedestrian. I, I think that we've got a healthier, uh, package than we had before.
Do we have time? It's our goal at eight, or what is our goal?
I, I'm.
How did, what did we end last time, last Monday, eight o'clock?
Uh, you, you were, it was around eight o'clock.
We, we did, but at the same time, um, I would think that Ms. McNeese and perhaps Ms. Vincent has a target. We, we have fixed dates ahead of us and perhaps a work schedule that maybe we need to meet. So if it is critical that we move on and bite some more off, uh, I'll follow the lead of staff to make sure that we meet our goals.
Maybe let's try, I think lifelong learning, which is the old public schools facility element, we can probably knock out pretty quickly. And then plan administration, I just honestly don't know how much y'all wanna dig into that. So, and that's something that, there's always been this plan administration element, but I don't think anybody's ever really seen it except for a few staff people through the, you know, the nine, from the nineteen nineties forward. So, we're, we're daylighting that element and, uh, bringing it, you know, as part of the review, so. But let's, let's, uh, let's.
So, my question actually on this, because I know by statute you're supposed, I know we kind of briefly talked about it, have the school board member as part of your, your local planning agency. Um, and, and I know just from other communities that sometimes that is like pulling teeth
Yeah.
to get them to send someone, or I don't know if you could even just send them this and ask for comments or something like that. I don't know which one your delegate is, is it Marshall?
Yeah.
Yeah, so at least send it so you, you can say you sent it, got the comments, invited them to participate. Yeah.
Okay, so are we gonna continue even without the school board member present? It's gonna be forwarded to them electronically. Excellent. It's going to be forwarded them electronically. Excellent.
What is no longer required?
It's no longer required statutorily, so.
Yeah.
This whole thing?
It's optional.
So, but we think it's.
And I think that that was something that really came through from the public engagement was some some concerns about, you know, vocational training and educational opportunities in.
So we've kind of shifted the focus of this from just planning for K through five and making sure that, you know, there's facilities to looking at a little broader from a whole, a little more holistic. And they did the same thing with, you know, with uh in Pinellas County too. They really took a different shift. Now, we still coordinate with the schools on, so any, you know, anytime that we have development happening that has residential component, we 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 coordinate with the school district to make sure they're aware so that they can plan for the future. But at the end of the day, we're not, our our school needs are from just like new new space are pretty minimal in the county because of it's just not a lot of.
Is this something that is required for us to?
No, the the you do, you do not, the public schools facilities element is what it used to be called, is no longer a required element under state statute. We think, so we've retooled this into something that we think is good to have, which we're calling a lifelong learning element, so.
Yeah, what is still required is the interlocal agreement, which we have. And it is talked about in here and it was talked about in your intergovernmental, you looked at last time, so. That's still required, the interlocal agreement.
So we're we're kind of spreading out and reaching out and finding new 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 things to do, right?
Yes.
Would we consider, because you brought it up, I'll let you go.
Well, so I have a a little bit of a study I did on my own that might kind of actually factor into this. So at the Tarpon High East Lake game, it was extremely crowded, okay? And um I know we had not, we had done our original population. We had the original projections that I guess last time, the last meeting, were cut in half. But um that have shown that that the city has continuously grown in population, not not just, not necessarily, you know, like extraordinarily growth. But um I did look at the school at Tarpon High and over the past five years, the population has decreased by eighteen percent. Which is a lot. Okay, and if we didn't have our band program, that would be significantly less because that is the only program at our school that actually brings students to it and and.
Because they're nationally almost international.
But without that, it would just be the students that just like live in the area. And and then I think we even have the choice school. So there there hasn't really been other schools that have grown since in the five years the same high schools have existed. And so that to me is not conducive with, if this is something that we just consider with the other start, other other parts of our planning and who's coming to this city and who's moving here into these places? Because it's not people with with children. And it would, I mean, if, say, if we don't have that band program, I don't even know if Tarpon High would exist in a few years. And the way that this pop, if the city, the city's clearly growing, but the school is not, so.
And you know, and that's there's a lot of stuff way up here, you know, in terms of how, where school funding goes and how it gets distributed from state, federal, you know, and, you know, what's given priority, so.
Or well, there's nothing to do with who gets money as far as the band or any of that stuff like that. But I mean, if the school in general, it's just that there's no, I I just don't think there's any, there's kids to go there. I mean, population wise, it's not families that are coming here. I just, I don't know if that has anything to do with how this, some of this is, because I've never, I didn't even know we had a element like this that we could look at. But I saw that they were talking, looking at school enrollment projections and capital investment decisions. I think that's pretty much head on is, are we, are the projects and the development that we're encouraging, is it going to encourage the families and that our schools are going to continue to exist? Because at this rate, it doesn't look like that.
I don't know if I have an answer for you.
Considering it, it's not necessarily looking at this part, it's all the other stuff that we're that we're doing that's going to change this. It's not this. This is just meant, if you look at this, be like, oh, yeah, the numbers aren't good.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, it it's, at some point, you know, I mean, I think that's why we're, we do want to have something like this.
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, I didn't know if that was something like, it seemed like relevant to.
It's absolutely relevant to, you know, to, you know, the the future of the of the school systems. I mean, you know, absent, you know, things like tourism and things like that, you know, if you peel it back, one of the biggest drivers, you know, of people choosing to live in a given place is the school system. You know, whether or not, you know, something like this can influence that, I mean, that's might be pretty lofty. But but if they're, you know.
Well, I mean, I almost mean more of like this in terms of being referred to on the, in the other, on the other, like in the capital investment, like the the, on the capital investment part.
Right.
This is referenced.
Right.
The lifelong learning, like as a, I don't know, a strategy or something, like to put, to link this to that, you know what I mean? Because I think this is more of the of the um the result of the decisions that we make and everything else. Not that the the these decisions we can't make because we can't make any decisions about the school.
Right.
We can just evaluate and consider like the the populations and the numbers and everything. But without this being in, I think, in the other elements, then it won't, it won't be anything that they consider. We'll just be looking at like, oh, look at, look at all the decisions we made, how they've affected the school. It doesn't really do anything except show us how the results.
Let's go through this and maybe some.
So I'm just going to group based on that conversation, just for review, we'll just take objective one point one, objective one point two, both all under goal one. And then if there are any feedback or comments in regards to those two objectives. I have one, I think there's a natural segue, although the conversation was about a high school and lower. It's referred to here just as schools and this would tie us straight back to our college that I'd like to refer to as our college. And that um infrastructure and planning projects that might get our college more um included with our community. I think that there would be some positive outcomes with that. Don't know how that would be included there.
I think goal three really talks about that, you know. It moves a little more toward workforce development, but it does talk about educational institutions. But we can be more overt about that.
I think overt would be okay.
Yeah.
I I think as I continue to pull this, you know, it was just, as everyone reads, I'll just drone on in the background. I didn't know SPC was part of the city of Tarpon Springs. I graduated from SPC with a bachelor's degree in business management. I love that degree. My wife graduated from SPC with a BSN. My daughter is going to SPC right now and I've got two more I'll probably put through there. It is a fine school system. I'm still deeply enrolled. You may not know this. But they are being led in a very vibrant direction right now. They, you know what, SPC, they actually have started a high school within the campus?
Really?
SPC Collegiate High School. It's amazing what's going on there right now. And where I'm going to go with this is not so amazing and I'm going to just beat it again. We don't have a road that goes there. But thank you, look, I got a full-on laugh.
I can see it now. It's going to be named after our.
We don't, and we have, wait, we've got the, it's a thousand feet wide. It's actually a grand boulevard with a fence at the end. Okay, so enough of that, but uh, that's more overt.
That these need to be referenced in the other elements, lifelong learning.
Oh, God, that would be good. Justin Finesse Highway.
Finesse Highway.
They could name a conference room at the college.
Well, he's already going to that class.
I took my statistics there.
Under I think we can add something under goal three, definitely to that's more overt about the partnership with SPC. I I think that's the appropriate place to put it. Like, I mean, we have objective three point two, enable the city's youth to access quality education and compete in the global economy. I think, you know, either a policy right under there with these that talks about, you know, that partnership.
Can we use SPC overtly and just refer to them by name as as a partner? We have them in someplace else and just just call it out and say that's our partnership that we want to grow.
We can do that. I mean, we may be even be able to, I don't, I don't know, I don't know anything about the um, the program that you were just talking about. I mean, that might be something we might want to do a little investigating into.
Saint Pete Collegiate?
Yeah.
That's where Zoe's going next year.
Okay, yeah, so.
My daughter's going to go there next year.
They they even have a new program that is so cutting edge, so I'll I'll bore you just for ten more seconds. So I have three daughters and they went to PHU, although in Tarpon Springs, it's just how it is. So one went to the medical program, fine, she's a nurse, she's twenty-six. But I have one right now in the pharmacological program, they call it pharmacy program, which is fine. But there's a new program at SBC, at their college that is about um using advanced equipment within the medical field. This is right, right on the most cutting edge where young people can learn how to use these robotic devices.
Biomedical engineering?
There it is.
Yeah.
Right there at SPC. It's such a gem.
Yeah. We'll, we'll uh, we'll expand that objective three point two definitely and.
Yeah.
Okay. We like that.
Well, you took us all the way to goal three.
Sorry, I was.
No, that's okay. There's
I have nothing.
There's a lot of reading. If anyone wanted to go on to to goal four.
And Georgianne, you were just wanting to make sure that we have good references back into.
On the capital investment part, if we could loop in, because uh, objective one and policy one and two, just considering the population in those capital decisions. I'm just worried if, when Mr. Ford's not around, what's going to happen to the band?
Well, you know, it's to the, you know, the, you know, the school system owns that property there in uh, off of West Klosterman. What is it, the, the, and they wanted to sell the property because they don't, because there's no need for it now. You know, and so that's
Sad.
You know, I mean, that's, yeah, there's no need for it and, you know, so, you know, like, so yeah, there's types of, you know, long-term coordination issues.
Team's doing better.
Yeah, I know, they, consistency.
Perhaps if there was a cutting-edge swimming pool in.
I agree a hundred percent. Three hundred thousand, that's all your capital investment.
If there was a new, like a long swim style pool.
I think they got all the funding that they needed.
I stopped swimming, yeah.
Okay.
I was a swimmer. No, they have to drive all, we'd rather have pickleball courts.
Oh, wait a minute, actually, no, I did the state pool, then the governor slash.
Our sixteen-year-olds can drive to Palm Harbor and swim.
Something else happened, I think, to save it.
It's only three hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's.
We have a good swim team, too.
I have a question. Right along that property, and maybe somebody here knows. It almost looks like they did a cutback like from the fence in. And I've seen it in some other spots too around Tarpon, where it's, you know, wooded or, you know. It's all brown. It's cut back, but then there's brown looking on the foliage and it, it looks like it was sprayed.
Yeah, it's probably sprayed.
Yeah?
Yeah.
They can do that?
Some type of magic, I mean, yeah, some form of magic.
It could have been a base of species they were spraying to get rid of, yeah. Brazilian pepper and stuff that's just taking over.
Dominates.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we have it next to where we live, that they are fast-growing Brazilian peppers too.
In Virginia where I'm at, it's kudzu.
It's kudzu?
Kudzu is just taking over everything.
Isn't that like a vine or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What part of Virginia?
New York.
Oh, okay.
Any more thoughts, comments on goal four or objective four point one?
Well, this is your safe access.
To SPC.
Policy four point one point four, determine priority for construction of sidewalks and crosswalks.
I think under this objective is where you would, if you really wanted to collectively, you know, push the issue of the connection with SPC, this would probably be the place to do it.
As section four.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, works for me.
Can you put a separate policy though, who talks about the road?
Yeah, I think you can. You can put a policy in there.
I read, recommended that on your behalf.
Bless your words.
So I have a separate policy.
Really?
Yeah, she's going to put.
Do you want, do you want to call out the connection of distance specifically or just?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay. I like where, I like where you're at.
We're, we're in a mind meld, that's good.
That is superseding and saying, we're, we're looking for a connection of of Saint Petersburg College, not just that there needs to be a connection and not that it, and it's important that safety vehicles get through there, but we're really looking for that connection between SBC and the students that need it most.
Well said, well said.
We will develop said policy. All right, okay.
Well then, if no one has any more comments, that would mean that we successfully got through two sections under the guidance of staff, the end of lifelong learning element. And unless there were any objections, I would adjourn that meeting at eight oh one.
Yep, excellent.
Thank you.
Good meeting, very productive.
These have been good.
Add this to the collection.
Life on learning will be fifteen minutes.
Are you taking these again or not?
I don't know, I'm, what?
I would never.